The guilt is.
We'll call the work session to order. Dr. Steve.
Not you're going to do that regularly.
Thank you for standing. We're saluting you.
Well, I get to be at the podium tonight. All those nights when I don't have to be up here, I make for it every, make up for it every now and then with a little extended time. So tonight is an overview of where we're at in our process of revising our district priorities. So I'm going to give you just a little bit of a refresher course and then talk about what we heard and then just briefly talk about where we go from here to eventually land on our revised document by this fall and be ready to roll for the 2020, 21, 22 school year. I have to get used to saying that. So as you recall, we've been doing a lot of feedback sessions. We've been to every school. We've had numerous groups over here that we've met with. We had a parent feedback session, community feedback session, and then some that just kind of worked out with the STC group and just some other meetings that I'm part of being able to gather feedback. So I counted just on my spreadsheet of just kind of all of the things that Doug Morrison listed with comments and we had just right under 1,000. And so a lot of really good work, a lot of people who were willing to stay after school and have early morning meetings to get this done in a couple of months. So very valuable time spent. So we're going to review the themes that we've gleaned from all of that work and talk about kind of the big things that we've heard and some of the things even though they may be weren't heard as frequently, might have been tucked in within a theme that we've listed or are part of the work that would be articulated more when we get the detailed document done where we'll have district priorities than the initiatives that go with those priorities and then the progress indicators that we'll look at that help us know what we're getting done. So just as kind of a reminder, this has been the progression of the year, kind of looking at the big picture, moving through the year, reviewing what we've currently been doing, talking about different areas that we may need to focus on and then doing the listening. So here's where we are in that whole process of getting us ready for the next phase is identifying these themes. If you remember, we also talked about the process that we'll be kind of weaving in and part of this is the same that you're used to and it might feel just a little bit different as well when we really think about continuous improvement and we think about kind of the process of planning, which is what we're doing right now. Then we articulate those initiatives, we do those things, we study the results and then we determine what we're going to do next. And that's going to be a yearly thing multiple times a year when we do updates and really just trying to be as agile as possible. One of the things that we talked about during all of these sessions and that we've talked about as well is kind of viewing the, the work that we were doing post COVID. What does that look like now kind of this year during COVID and what might that feel like as we move from it? And we're not certain on a lot of things. And so all the more reason why we need to really be flexible and agile in our work going forward so that we can adapt and adjust. And then just a reminder about that continuous improvement mindset. This is kind of related tonight to what we're doing with what are those big picture priorities that are kind of the big district picture, then how does that work its way down to the levels, elementary, middle and high school and then within our departments? What does that look like at a school level with school improvement plans and the school goals that are set? How does that impact grade levels, PLC work, right down into our teachers' professional goals and the work that they do as individual staff members? And then really how that looks with our students and their ownership of their learning and the priorities that they have for how they want to grow. So as a reminder, our current strategic plan is kind of organized around four buckets, if you will. The first is student outcomes. The next category was climate and culture. The third one was focusing on district staff and then finally, community engagement. And so tonight, as we kind of frame up the themes that emerged, I'm going to leave them in those four areas, knowing that as we begin to dig in a little bit more to all of the feedback that we got and begin to really look at those initiatives, there may be another bucket, maybe two, maybe it'll be the same, but we're going to look at it and be intentional about how we categorize those things so that it's very understandable by anybody who might be looking at the work of the district, parents, community, as well as our staff and our internal audience. So we'll move right into the four areas. And I just want to remind you that for tonight, these are just kind of general themes. And I'll give you some context, just to give you a little idea of some of the nuances that might have emerged around a theme, but we won't get into specific initiatives tonight. There may already be things happening in our district that are within these theme areas that sound very familiar, but I just want to kind of keep us at that general level tonight before we get too far into the weeds with the actual initiatives that will come as that next step. So of course, one of the primary things that did emerge and that has to continue to emerge is our central focus, which is student achievement and really making sure that we are attending to those academic needs, particularly in light of lost learning last spring, as well as just kind of the clunkiness of this year. You know, I've said before, what does it look like this year to teach reading to a first grader when you're in a mask and you can't distinguish very well cat from fat and, you know, just letter sound recognition and all of those things that are part of beginning teaching of reading. So that's just one example. We know that K1, two, we have some work to do in, in our achievement, but that increased achievement has to go across the board. The second thing that goes along with that are the supports that we have in place for that academic achievement. And I refer to that as that kind of continuum of academic supports. One of the frameworks that we've talked about that we're probably going to shore up in some new ways is what's called the multi-tiered system of supports, MTSS. Formerly, you might have heard it referred to as RTI, response to intervention. And then RTI came together with PBIS, all the letters of the alphabet, it seems like at times. PBIS is positive behavior[1374.89][1374.91]intervention and supports. And so what that means is we have a real clear framework for how we support students in their academic needs as well as behavioral needs. And that that means a continuum of support, whether you're needing help because you might be struggling or because you are right on track, but might have an area that emerges here or there where you need some extra supports, all the way to the continuum of students who might even be ahead in their learning or might be high ability and need to be challenged. And so that continuum allows us to be mindful of all the ways that we support our students. Another theme that emerged, centers on equity and access to opportunities and wanting to make sure that our students can have access to things like the courses they want to, to be part of or the activities or maybe things looking different, maybe from one level to the next, or even how that, back to a continuum, how those opportunities all connect together. What happens in elementary that then feeds into a middle level experience that then feeds into high school and allows kids to do the things that they want to do? This also had to do with a sense of belonging and making sure that kids have a place to belong. I am sure that something will emerge in our plan about having kids well connected to activities, knowing that that's one of the research-based initiatives that gets kids to school. You'll see in one of the other slides, the relationship to attendance and truancy, but it all comes back to being able to take advantage of the things that you want to be able to do. Career pathway expansion and articulation. We heard this from elementary all the way through high school in terms again of exposure, the ability to learn about different things, how that looks maybe in your electives at middle school, and then how that articulation happens for career pathways at the high school. Everything from awareness to do we have the right things in place right now for interest? Are they well connected one to another? Does what you do in middle level lead you to what's possible in high school? And then how we showcase all of those opportunities to our, our parents and families so that that's easily understood and really thinking about what our kids are most interested in, what's really emerging in the workplace in terms of needs in our community as well as, you know, kind of nationally recognized areas of need for employment. Then we characterize this as kind of future-ready program enhancements and that somewhat parallels with the career pathways, but it's all of those things that make sure that our kids are on the cutting edge of what they're going to need to be able to know and do for their future world. And some of that, you know, we see emerging quickly and some of those things have been around for a long time. We talk about the soft skills along with the job-specific skills. Can students get up and show up and dress up, as I like to say? Can they be flexible employees? We've learned this year that, you know, what people were doing for work looks very different now than maybe what they were doing a year ago or where they were doing that, how they were doing that. So just really making sure that we are layering in things that help our students to be future-ready. Socially emotional learning and supports that came up quite frequently along with what I'll have on the next slide, just with well-being and wellness, mental health, all of those things, knowing that kids need to have all of the supports, kind of that whole child aspect to be ready to be learners in the classroom. And I think after this year, knowing that many of our families have gone through some unique circumstances with COVID, that tells us that we need to make sure we're building in some proactive strategies that help kids learn those resiliency skills as well as the reactive things when kids might be in crisis or need some extra supports. Things that we've talked about already, even in the budget considerations with the addition of counselors and some of the ways that we want to layer in some more curricular aspects of that, just knowing that we have to attend to those needs as well as the academic needs of our students to have that whole picture. And then another thread that emerged was the expansion of pre-K learning opportunities, whether that's junior kindergarten, wanting to have that in more places when possible, and also knowing the importance of early childhood opportunities. We have some great partnerships in our district through a few different organizations that have allowed that to expand with some philanthropic dollars, but really wanting to articulate the need for quality early childhood experiences and the impact that that has on future success and academic success all along the way. I think of it now too, in terms of students who may not have, have had that quality childcare experience this last year due to COVID. If parents didn't feel comfortable in that daycare or preschool setting, what does that look like now for the need for incoming kindergarteners or even junior kindergarteners next year? And what does that look like over the course of the next few years as we try to, to attend to those needs? And before I move on, any questions or comments just about this area? We'll maybe take them one area at a time so you don't forget by the time we go through the next ones. Anything surprising or anything that you didn't see that you expected maybe you would?
No, this, for me anyway, what I brought up in our earlier work sessions, this is really targeting the things I think that I feel like we can improve upon in the district. Some of these things we have and like you said, we just need to maybe repackage or structure them a little differently so they're better targeting the student outcomes that we need. But I'm glad to see.
Some of it's, I'm sure, the next leg of the journey. I mean, you know, a lot of this will feel like a continuation and there may be some things for initiatives that are brand new, but still very much fit with where the priorities have been. Other comments or questions? Okay, next area was climate and culture. So this goes back again to that multi-tiered system of supports and wanting to make sure that when students are having difficulties that are getting in the way of their learning, that we have a really clear framework for how we meet those needs. And then along with that is the training that may be necessary or. And then along with that is the training that may be necessary, or the refinement of the models that we use that give us the tools to meet the needs of students. They might be struggling behaviorally, emotionally, whatever that may look like, but we want to make sure that we're all speaking kind of from the same page, even the vocabulary that we use and the way that we support students if they move between schools and the consistency that we can provide. That has to do with special education as well as regular education, and even the interplay of those kind of parts of our district, so that if a student is struggling in some way, that we have really good solid planning that helps us know if the interventions we're putting in place are effective. And if they are, we continue, and if not, then we need to revise that plan and move on as we move down kind of a progression or layers of interventions that we can can provide to a student. But that was just one thing that that staff really want to be well-equipped, and we need to be very clear about how that framework works so that we are able to call in all the resources that we have. And we saw that a little bit reflected in the budget as well with some of the supports that we're adding there. The second, of course, like I mentioned before, plays with the bullet on the last slide, is mental health and well-being and how that impacts a child's ability to learn. We are fortunate in this community that we have great partners and partnerships, and so that fits with that first bullet of that framework of supports. And there are times when we are very well-equipped to meet the needs of our students, and there are times when it's up to us to connect families with the right resources for experts in our community so that they're able to provide the supports that might be needed. We have some great existing partnerships, as well as increasing some of those moving forward, and have really seen our community step up to help in this area. But just additional training, I mean, this is kind of an ever-evolving area, and now we have this new layer kind of from this last year that may mean something even different. We've had students in session here in our community, but we know that that's been really hard on students and families, just from the isolation factor through changes in families, the illness itself that families have endured, and just, you know, all of the regular things that happen that are difficult in life. And so we want to make sure that we have that healthy balance of what we are doing in our district, coupled with where our experts step into support. Attendance and truancy was huge. This was an area, probably one of the most frequently mentioned themes that came out from every session that I think we did. And this was elementary, it was middle school, it was high school, and one of the things that I think we all agree on are the attendance laws in our state are not robust and don't always support us in the work that we are trying to do well with families to keep kids in school. That's our primary focus. And how do we make sure that we are providing a high level of engagement with their learning, that we are involving them in activities, that they have a strong sense of belonging, but all of that to get them to school and to keep them to school with a strong degree of regularity? And we talked about this, too, related to transportation, which is the next bullet. Those kind of went hand in hand. And participation, again, going back to their ability to be in an activity or something that really engages them in wanting to come to school. So those two things are some things we're already kind of even taking a look at for next year, but we know that sometimes transportation can be a barrier. And that goes for our parents as well. Parents want to be involved with their kids. Sometimes they aren't able to get where they want to be, or we need to connect them with the resources that can help with that, too. But definitely two strong themes that emerged. Then the next one is related to our work around equity and just having definition around that work, having a framework that guides that. We've done some great training and some good work in our district up to this point. And so when we think about moving forward from where we are right now, how do we make that work visible? How do we make it so that we are building the expertise of our staff, that we're connecting with our neighborhoods and the real needs of our families as we then try to meet those needs and adjust what we can do to make sure everybody is able to be connected well to our district, but having clarity about that work? Questions about climate and culture area or things I can add clarification?
I guess I have a question on the attendance and truancy.
Yes.
Given the rate of vaccines for teachers and students, what relevancy does our virtual learning continue to have going into next year?
Related specifically to...
For healthy students.
Oh, okay, for mental health and well-being. You know, I think we learned a lot this year about our virtual academy, and, you know, as we've talked about, we put this in place this year because there were families that did not want to come to school due to COVID. That was one of the driving forces. That's why we offered it. Throughout the year, we learned a lot, and there are some families that it worked very well for that may want to choose that again next year. And we also learned that there are some families and students that that did not work as well for. We didn't have some of the parameters around that environment that we might have in kind of a regular version of that, where we tried to make sure we were offering supports, but a student may have been disengaged more than we wanted them to be. It might have been hard for a teacher to keep them on track if they didn't have the supports that were necessary for being successful in that environment. And for some students, it might have been detrimental to a sense of well-being if they experienced some isolation, but that was a choice their family made versus a student who might have thrived in that environment because of maybe some social anxiety or some reasons medically that it was not a good fit for them to be in school this year. So given vaccines, given what we may see, I think we already know we have fewer students who are choosing that option for next year, and we'll be studying that next year to see if that continues to be something that we want to offer, or if that becomes something that we can see that the vast majority of our families really just want their children in school with us. So I think we're still learning, and I think it could be affected either way in terms of mental health and well-being, depending on what that year looked like for our students.
I was just going to add, as far as like the transportation and participation, one of the great things about opening two additional schools, a middle school and a high school, is that we're also allowing that many more students to participate. And I know my daughter, as a current middle schooler, you know, sometimes the volleyball teams and the basketball teams are so large that people don't, they're on the team, but they don't really get a sense of experiencing what it's like to play the game. And for some people, that might be their only opportunity to play. And so I'm excited about the opportunity for those students to have now additional teams that are hopefully smaller, and not just athletics, but the bands and the choruses at all the levels. Getting more kids the opportunity to participate in that while bringing our school sizes down, I think, will hopefully be part of that engagement and helping kids to discover maybe something that, a talent that they didn't have or an interest that they didn't have before. And being able to do that in a new building, or even not a new building, but one of our existing ones that they maybe didn't get the opportunity before because there were just so many kids that were participating. So I think that's exciting. As our community grows into those two new schools, the benefit of that is going to be felt at all of our schools, especially that middle and high schools, getting more kids hopefully engaged early on, and then that will continue throughout the remainder of their education in the district, so.
Yes. And in trying to stay up here, there were so many ideas that were brought up that we'll be considering just in terms of the specific initiatives, but a lot of good proactive thinking around that, and how else can we help kids engage? Is this a scheduling issue? Is it, you know, how we've allowed for non-competitive sports just to try out your interest in something before you might feel comfortable being in the competitive version of that? Or what could we do for intramurals versus just our competitive sports? So lots of things I think that we can work on with that over time, but definitely it helps when just the numbers are a little bit different in a school and you feel like you can be part of that. So hopefully, we can really impact that in a lot of ways. Yeah, good. Other questions or comments?
Yes, I love that seeing where this is coming in also ties in with what our health curriculum that we're going to talk about at the board meeting, as well as what our budget, you know, we have the same number, if not even fewer, students than we've had in the past, and we're having more counselors at the high school, middle school, and elementary level. So we are hopefully addressing some of these issues we've seen arising due to COVID and other traumas for our students and staff. So I think that will be helpful in that area, and I hope to, that we'll see some effects of that as well going forward, so.
Yeah. Re-engaging people on many levels will be really important over the next few years, just coming kind of on the other side of things. Good. What else? Anything else? Okay. Next category is attending to our staff. And this, I think, is something the district has been prioritizing, and we continue to hear, and this one's hard not to go into the details just for some of the ideas that also emerged with this and things we've been looking at even for next year, but really hungry to have that ongoing learning. And it was really interesting to hear the different versions of that as we met with different departments of staff. We met with nutrition services and operations and our IT staff, and everybody wants to be better and better at what they do. And how are we providing those opportunities? And then how do we differentiate between a brand-new teacher and a teacher maybe who's been with us for part or all of a career? How do we keep offering things that people are interested in? How do we do those have-tos, those need-tos, and those want-tos, and just because it's fun-tos? So I think that's really important, and we've also talked about how do we capture that learning, which you'll see a little bit farther down in our bullets, so that then they can add expertise to all of the different things that we do in our district? How can they provide that learning to each other? How do we build structures so that they are the experts in sharing that information with their colleagues? And so there's some exciting things in that area. Professional connections kind of goes with that, but it's about making sure that teachers have the opportunity to not only interact with the people they work with right in their buildings, but across the district, as well as in our community. We recently had a conversation even with the chamber in thinking about what can we do specific to our staff who have a little bit different work schedule or kind of, you know, daytime reality that maybe not others have when they don't have to get back to a classroom full of children? But how do we network them with professionals in our community and make sure that they have some of the amenities and some of the opportunities that many people do, just as part of a great professional culture that exists in Sioux Falls? And then, of course, wanting to make sure that we continue to celebrate and cultivate the diversity of our staff, and that will be a priority no matter what. That emerged as something that people are very aware of, the work that's been done, and wanting to really make sure that we continue with that. And part of that comes with the professional learning that we continue to do as a school district, as well as being really intentional about cultivating a diverse staff. We talked about how we can maybe do some things differently with language acquisition or accommodations to make sure that we can hire people whose first language may not be English, and how do we maybe change even the on-ramp to working in our district to be a bit more proactive for that? We also talked about it in terms of what we've done with our teacher pathway, but all of the other positions in addition to teachers where it's really important also to cultivate that diversity. And we just can't wait to see what's going to happen with our teacher pathway and thinking about the ways we can build out some of those kinds of opportunities as well as we cultivate our existing staff and help them move to the positions that they're most interested in. Then support for wellness and well-being, and this is specific to staff. And this is always important. I think it's even a little bit more important or has that same kind of COVID lens on it. And we had, again, some really great ideas with this, and it kind of goes to the professional connections bullet. But how can we provide that when we can't do everything as a school district? We can offer some great things like a conference that we're doing in the fall in partnership with one of our corporate partners for wellness and well-being, but how do we also cultivate that in some other ways where staff can have their needs met apart from their schools and what our community can step in and do? So some great conversations about that, but continuing to make that a priority. And then retention and recruitment strategies. And I intentionally put retention first. We've really stepped up the recruitment that we've done, but we also have to really focus on retention. And why is it that people stay with us over time? And some of those things in those other bullets about professional connections, connecting them to other people in the community, connecting them to all the wonderful amenities that our community has, and helping them to take advantage of those things are things that keep them in our school district as well as in the community of Sioux Falls. My only hesitation about connecting them professionally is I don't want people to steal our great staff, because once they get to know them, they're going to want to hire them. So I'll have to have like a disclaimer with the chamber that you can't take away our great people, but really wanted to make sure that that retention piece is just as strong. And then finally, looking at workplace and workload, just that constant review of what we're able to do, needing to always look at the numbers as well as the needs, and thinking about how we do that over time. And every year is different. That's one of the unique things about our profession and that ability to project the number of kids that are going to be in a classroom. You can't control what may happen the day before school starts or, you know, two days after school starts. And I said, you know, when I was a teacher, I might have a year, my first year teaching, I had 32 students in my classroom. I had a big room, didn't really feel like that was a difficult situation. The next year, I had 25 or 26, and it felt like I had 40-some days. And so, you know, every year is different. And so it's how do we look at that need over time? How do we make sure that we continue to partner, to look at all of the needs that are realities in our classrooms? And then finally, strengths-based cross-collaboration. That goes back to what I said, is using the expertise all across our district. If we provide professional learning that equips some of our staff in some unique ways, how can they offer that expertise to other teachers? Some of the ideas that came up were visiting other classrooms and being intentional about just getting out and being in another building. Those are things that are really refreshing. You go out and you see, oh, why didn't I ever think to, you know, do that in my classroom? And you come back with some ideas that keep you fresh. Questions about the district staff area?
No questions, but I just think that we've said numerous times that, you know, the quality of the teacher in our classroom is really going to be a direct reflection of the outcome for our students. And so I think this piece right here is just very important, that we invest the time and the resources and the energy in making sure that our staff feel appreciated and invested in, that we want them to continue to grow. Many of them do want that, and so I think it's a way that we can help them to achieve some of their goals. I also think that, to your example of, you know, doing a training and then having them train others, I think that's when you really start to actually live out what you've learned, is if you can sit in a workshop or whatever and you can hear somebody, but the second you have to turn around and teach it to somebody else, I think is when it's really, you really, it's really engaging to you and you really know that you know the material and you know it. And so the more that we can kind of reinforce that with our staff, obviously without putting more work on them to say, oh, hey, you could teach these kids during the day and then these adults at night. But I think that finding that balance of being able to do that, I think that many, many staff members would be excited to share and be that leader of whatever that content is for the rest of their peers. So I think there's lots of great ideas, and I think that the staff themselves probably have numerous ideas that they could share, and those are the ones they're going to buy into and want to participate in. And so it's great that you had, you know, listening sessions with them and collected some specific things that hopefully will then be taken advantage of and utilized by them.
Yeah. We work with very professional people, and they want to continue to grow in their own professional skills, as well as they want to learn more and do more with each other, which is really the fun part of what we do.
And having that peer-to-peer, as you mentioned, connection is great because especially if they have questions later on, they know exactly where they can go to get that answer because unless, unlike someone who's from out of state coming in and giving a presentation, they're able to make that connection right away and follow up with that. So I think that's great.
Absolutely. Good.
I'm curious, under the retention and recruitment strategies, I just conjured up some thoughts in wondering if we'd have some, kind of some measurable resource strategies surrounding that and how we continue to be really competitive, I would say, with area districts in attracting both and retaining our staff and teachers. We at some point have some measurables around that.
Yep, that'll be those indicators that we'll set. And so these are just those big themes, and then we'll have the specific initiatives, which is kind of the what that we're going to embark on. And with each of those, we'll have those key indicators that we can look to to say, how do we know that we're successful in this? So with that one, it would probably be, you know, a metric that we would have that would show us. show us either a rate of satisfaction or the actual percentages of the retention of teachers year over year. And again, with that kind of continuous improvement mindset is, is that going in the right direction over time? And not maybe pulling in an arbitrary number, but really looking at, are we doing what we want to be doing? And if we're not, then we need to go back and look at what we either put in place for some new strategies or we've got to go ask better questions of our staff to find out why it is that that might be an issue. Yeah.
Sometimes what we think, you know, retains them or attracts them, what we think and the reality of why they would come here can can be off.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Other comments, questions? Okay, last area, community engagement. You know, I just have to preface this with having been here soon coming up on a year. This is a community that is so generous and so willing to come alongside of our schools and our students. And we want to make sure that we are engaging with those community partners in all the right ways and that we are celebrating those things as well. So the first really big theme that emerged under this is just making sure that we have really meaningful connections with parents and wanting to offer parents opportunities to learn and grow as parents who are very connected with their children's education and want to be able to support them in all of the ways that they want to, as well as connecting them with their schools, connecting them with other parents, and then, of course, making sure that they're well connected with our community. And doing that, not getting too far into the ideas or the things we've talked about with doing some really intentional listening next year in our neighborhoods and using a particular model that will help us to do that with consistency, but in a way that's really an easy way for parents to come and talk with us. And I think it was so great to hear our staff want to be so responsive to our parents and wanting to just be connected with them. They love what they do, and they know that our parents are such great partners and that we just want to strengthen that as time goes on. There's that community listening. We talked about having a cadre of people who can help us go and do that within our neighborhoods or in places where we can make sure that we're listening to all voices, not just those that may come when we invite them to come here to IPC or to our schools, but making sure that people who may feel less comfortable speaking up can still have an opportunity to be heard and that we cultivate that. That also is with the tools that we have, like our Let's Talk tool, our new website that's going to be coming on this fall, and some maybe other ways that we really listen well. Instead of doing one big survey, we've talked about how we put out questions more often so that we can respond to them, but really intentionally listening. And then a framework for two generational impact. And this kind of came within that first bullet, but wanting to frame that up just a little bit differently because as they talked about parents, it was also that relationship with parents and children and how we can really think about the the impact that we can have with what we offer for parents so that both parents and children are benefiting from some of the things that we're doing, whether it's language, language acquisition or parent ed with, you know, working with your preschooler or your toddler or how to help your high school with homework. And here's also a pathway for you maybe at one of our higher ed institutions where you can build job skills or do that thing that you dream about doing as a parent. So really thinking about two generational impact and then expanding some of the partnerships that we have and making sure that we are being intentional about recognizing those partnerships. We have so many things happening in our district and making sure that we are quantifying those and that we are keeping track of the impact. You know, it goes to some of the indicators that may need to be put in place to really know that what we're doing together is making the impact that we want it to make on our students and in our schools. We've talked with the foundation about how we do the recognition and how we may incorporate some things next fall to be more intentional about that because there are so many. It's kind of hard to get your arms wrapped around it. I know as somebody new, it seems like, you know, there's just partnership after partnership for so many different reasons, all the way from junior kindergarten, preschool, all the way through age 21. You know, we have our our kids who are out working, doing jobs and life skills, all the way to people providing preschool. And it's so, it's just, it's just this rich environment that we have here in Sioux Falls that we want to make sure we continue to grow in the right ways. And then multidirectional focus is just really that aspect of thinking about the benefits that we get as a school district, but also how we can add value to the community and how we can benefit others who are partnering with us, how we're thinking about the range of ages that we serve, how we just think about all of the benefits that we can realize if we do our work really, really well. Just so many ways that we're not just thinking about us as a school district, but also the value that we bring to other things as well. So just some great ideas that have emerged around that. I think that's my last bullet. Yep. Thoughts or comments about community engagement?
That's always been such an important part of the Sioux Falls School District when they, when the bond and the new buildings were, having that community engagement piece is why it was so successful. And for us to continue to be successful in our community, we need to continue to be listening to our community and making sure we're adapting. I love the partnership expansion and framework for the two generation impact because I know the Sioux Empire Leadership Council, that's something they're really looking to partner with us to do. So that fits right within something the community's looking to do as well. So thank you very much.
Yeah. We have exciting things ahead. We really do. And we have such willing partners that just want to continue to expand opportunities for students, and that is a great thing. Okay, so next steps, just briefly, our next steps are to take all of this really rich information that we have and these big themes just give you an idea kind of of what's emerged. And now it's really going to be taking those themes and looking at the most important things because the key word is priorities and what are going to be our priorities. What we have right now is a great kind of a master list, master document that's going to guide our work for many years, almost like a to-do list of sorts, you know, where you keep going back and kind of saying, where are we? And something maybe not yet, but in a year or two fits very well with the work that's come in front of it. And so we can keep going back and looking at the successes that we have. But right now, we want to develop that district priority document. In that document, we'll be, of course, stating what we believe. What do we believe is important about education? What do we believe is important as a district? And then providing context, kind of like I did talking through those things tonight, but with each area, we'll provide some context around any initiatives. We'll define those and what they are and for what purpose. And then, like I said earlier, we'll set those progress indicators. What is the metric? Not necessarily a specific number that we set at the beginning, but what's the metric that we're going to look at? Some will have a continuation of maybe where we are right now and then what that looks like moving forward. Some may have a new indicator because it's a new initiative. So we'll kind of customize those to what we set in place. And again, this is a slide you've seen before. This is kind of what we're trying to do. We're trying to be a cutting edge, successful organization, trying to determine what's really working now and what do we need to be moving towards so that we really stay on that leading edge of providing a great education for students here in Sioux Falls? Any other questions or comments?
This has been a huge undertaking in the midst of everything else that we are doing as a school district. So thank you to you and everyone in the administration as well as the local, the schools who participated in the CAFE model as well as the community and so forth because this is going to be fabulous. We are on the cusp in Sioux Falls with new opportunities and businesses moving in and so forth and art for our district for us to address this and move forward with them and show the partnerships in our community. When we did the bond, we showed how our demographics have changed and our, and our growing community in our district. So now we can hopefully address those new changes and go forward and continue to be the choice for people to come to to our school system. So thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Team effort and all with the intention of being the best school district in the nation. All right. Thank you, everybody.
We will take a recess until, oh, yes. Was there any public input? I'm sorry, on the district priorities that were presented today? No one signed up, did they? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll recess to our regular session.